Heat. And, uh, please know that, uh, if you ever have any problems, uh, if your air conditioner breaks or, or something, you have senior citizens, I will be happy to give you the, uh, city administrator's home telephone number and he'll, he'll certainly help you out. Okay, with that, automatic requests. President Rusniak, okay, Alder Person Regan, Alder Person Curly.
I have nothing to show for the police department or the fire department this evening, so I have nothing.
Oh, my gosh, Alder Person Garza.
Um, I'd just like to say congratulations on their retirement for Scoop De Ville's owners, Ray and Carrie.
Yes.
And, uh, wish them, uh, much luck. That's all I have. Thanks.
All the best. You bet. Alder Person Kohler.
No, I think you covered it. Um, the only thing I wanted to say would be to, um, if you have a neighbor that, um, has some health conditions in the seat, it's a good thing to go check in on them and just make sure they're okay.
Thank you very much. Alder Person Webb.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alder Person Phillip.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alder Person Savage.
Nothing tonight.
Okay, with that, we go directly into our public hearing, which is a petition for direct annexation by unanimous consent submitted by, uh, Langenacker Property Management, LLC, Eric Langenacker, registered agent, for approximately 2.04 acres located north of 1668 West State Street in the town of Hartford. I'd like to open this meeting and ask for the, excuse me, this hearing and ask for the reading of the notice.
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held at 7:00 PM or thereafter on August 27th, 2024 in the common council chambers at the lower level of City Hall, 109 North Main Street by the City of Hartford Common Council to consider the following: a petition to annex property to the City of Hartford. The petitioned area consists of a portion of tax key number T6016100C containing 2.036 acres, 88,678 square feet, more or less. The petitioned area will remain part of the agricultural district. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear those persons who wish to express their opinions for or against the requested annexation, rezoning, and official map revision. A map and legal description of the parcel can be viewed at the Department of Planning and Zoning, 262-673-8272 by appointment, 109 North Main Street, Monday through Friday between the hours of 7:30 AM and 4:30 PM dated this third day of August 2024. This was published in the Daily News on August 3rd, 2024, and August 10th, 2024, and seven notices were sent.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. With that, we'll have explanation of hearing by staff, and I'm assuming that will be our city planner, Jacob Mas.
That is correct, Mayor. So, we're looking at annexing 2.04 acres, uh, the Langenacker Property Management, LLC is looking to annex that. Uh, it is located north of 1668, uh, West State Street. That property was annexed into the city in 2014. That, that parcel was 200, 2.97 acres. Uh, Mr. Langenacker is looking to build a 7,200 square foot shed on his property. It's zone A1. In order to build any shed or agricultural type of building on it, it has to be five acres or more. Uh, in order to do that, he has to annex his parcel in and then attach it to 1668 West State Street to allow for the development of that, uh, 7,200 acre, or 7,200 square foot shed. Uh, the only thing to note is that there is nobody living on this property. It'll become part with, there is residential structure on 1668 West State Street. Uh, looking at the taxes on the parcel when it comes into the city, uh, because it was recently created, uh, there really is no tax history on it, so I do my best use of what else is out there in the town of Hartford. So, based on that, uh, the approximate, it would be approximately $340, um, generated annually to the city property taxes in amount of $1.15, or I should say the valuation of the proposed property would be approximately $340 with a property tax of approximately $1.59 a year, uh, per state statutes. Every, we have to pay the town of Hartford tax on this parcel for five years, which would be approximately 51 cents per year. Uh, there are no utilities at this property or 1668 West Great Street, so it will not be connecting to those utilities. And again, there's no impact on the school district or anything like that. So, we're looking to approve this, uh, annexation to allow it to attach to 1668 West State Street so that Mr. Langenacker can properly build a shed.
Super. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we would have appearances for. Anybody wishing to appear for, uh, this direct annexation by unanimous consent? Uh, you could just come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and you get three glorious minutes.
Eric Langenacker, 1724 West State Street, Hartford. Just looking to build a shed to put some of this equipment in. It's getting too expensive. Leave sit outside. Same building you guys got down at the city garage. Nothing fancy, just a pole building. So, that's it.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to appear for? Third call, appearances for? If not, we would go appearances against. Anybody wishing to appear, uh, for, uh, against the petition for direct annexation by unanimous consent? Anybody wishing to appear against? Third call, anybody wishing to appear against? If not, discussion by council. Questions, comments, concerns? Looks pretty straightforward. Yes, President Rusniak.
Worried about those property taxes. 51 cents a year. Do you write out one check or write out five checks?
Please tell me we'll just pay for five years instead of burning a 70 cent stamp every year.
Exactly. Right. 51 times 5.
I believe it's one every year.
Thank you. Okay. Well, maybe we should add that as an addendum. Just give them $2.55.
So, prove it with the consent, with the, um, change. They pay five years in advance?
No.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Hearing now, I'll close the hearing and ask for action on ordinance number 1494, annexing, uh, the territory to the City of Hartford, Wisconsin, north of 1668 West State Street and east of 1700 West State Street with the tax key number of T6 underscore 016100D. Motion to approve by, uh, Joe, second by Tony.
Uh, second question, our question of the vote, is this a vote to approve or a vote to suspend the rules?
Yeah, here votes.
Now, see, I had asked before that if there was a suspension needed on this, that it should be noted, because I know that that happens when we go into here where it says first or second reading.
Motion to suspend the rules.
So, can we, can we do that from now on, please? If you're gonna try to suspend the rules on something like that, then have it written like the regular ordinances where it says first reading and second reading. So, okay, this time anyway, suspend the rules. For suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried.
Question, who with the second on the suspension of rules? Joe Phillip had first, Tony Garza had second.
Correct.
Motion by Alder Person Phillip, seconded by Alder Person Garza to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of proposed ordinance number 1494.
All those in favor? Oh, well, you already took the vote. Same two on the, uh, motion, then?
Motion approved.
Tony Garza.
Motion by Alder Person Kohler, was it? Phillip?
Sorry, yeah, Joe Phillip.
Motion by Alder Person Phillip, seconded by Alder Person Garza for the adoption of proposed ordinance number 1494.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. Second is review of a rezoning request for an unaddressed parcel tax key number 038-1017-1413-0000 in the town of Rubicon under the 2007 intermunicipal agreement between the City of Hartford and the Town of Rubicon. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask for a reading of the notice.
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held at 7:00 PM or thereafter on August 27th, 2024 in the common council chambers at the lower level of City Hall, 109 North Main Street by the City of Hartford Common Council to consider the following: John and Christie Odenwald have requested the rezoning of the following property in the town of Rubicon on Rome Road, tax key number 038-1017-1413-0000 containing 34.786 acres, more or less. The request is for the property tax key number 038-1017-1413-0000 to change from R1 residential district to A2 agricultural district. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear those persons who wish to express their opinions for or against the requested zoning change. A copy of the proposed ordinance can be viewed at the Planning and Zoning Department, 262-673-8272 by appointment at 109 North Main Street, Monday through Friday between the hours of 7:30 AM and 4:30 PM dated this third day of August 2024. This was published in the Daily News on August 3rd, 2024, and August 10th, 2024, and 14 notices were sent.
Thank you very much. Explanation by staff. We now again have the honor of, of being addressed by our city planner, Jacob Mas.
Uh, to note, we'll be looking for suspension of rules on this one as well. Uh, so the Odenwalds are looking to rezone a 34.78, 7.86, or 0.786 acre, uh, unaddressed parcel, um, from R1, which is single family, to A2, which is general agriculture. Uh, both zoning districts allow, uh, single family residents on it. The big kicker is in R1, uh, sheds or detached, uh, structures are limited to 1,500 square feet. Uh, this parcel is, the majority of it is wetlands and floodplain, so it's highly undevelopable, so we don't have an issue with it going from residential to agriculture. And this has been reviewed by the town, uh, town of Rubicon and, uh, their, their, uh, town board as well as the town's plan commission, and it was approved by them to move forward to us as a rezone. Uh, we have no issue with that, and so staff is recommending approval of the rezone from R1 to, uh, A2, uh, general agriculture.
Thank you very much. At this time, we would have appearances for. Anybody wishing to appear, uh, for, uh, before the city council for the review of this rezoning request? Uh, anybody wishing to appear for? Anybody wishing to appear for? Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and you get three glorious minutes.
Uh, John Odenwald, address is 730 Maplewood Lane in Cedarburg. Uh, my wife and I are the ones who own the property out there. Uh, we're just basically looking to be able to build a whole shed on the property to be able to store equipment to maintain 34, almost 35 acres of land. So, that's the only reason to, that, that we're looking to have this adjusted is that way we can actually build our house that we want and be able to actually, you know, store equipment inside rather than having it sit out simply because of the cost. So, that's the purpose for the rezoning.
You're always welcome to move to Hartford, just so you know.
All right.
Just trying to be friendly. Okay. With that, anybody else, appearance for? Seeing none, any appearances against? Anybody wishing to appear against the, uh, review of this rezoning request? Anybody wishing to appear against? Third question, anybody against? Hearing now, discussion by council. Yes, President Rusniak.
Jacob, when I look at the map, most of that is wetlands and floodplain, the whole bit. So, anything being built is gonna be up in that northeast corner on Rome Road?
That is correct.
Okay. How many acres is that?
I, I do not have a calculation on what the actual.
Probably, probably five, the way it looks.
It looks about.
I'd say that's safe.
Does John know? Five acres?
Uh, we were told.
Yep, stop, stop. Please be, yeah.
Uh, from what I understand, according to the, uh, surveyor and Dodge County, they're estimating that to be a little over six acres in that particular field. I think about 6.3-ish or something like that is what, uh, Dodge County had said falls outside of floodplain in that front field. So, just south of what you see, uh, for Old Stone, um, for Old Stone Bridge subdivision, that's where we would go is in that field, uh, right up by Rome Road.
Okay.
Easier for utilities and not having to concern ourselves with floods.
The rest of it looks pretty undevelopable.
Correct. Yeah, and that's why we were looking to go, um, over to the agricultural because it, it didn't seem like anybody would try to build houses in a floodplain, at least not if they know what they're doing, I don't think.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jacob, Dodge County approve this and Town of Rubicon approve this?
Correct.
Okay.
Super.
And here we are.
I think we do that alligator farm.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Any other questions? Against? Hearing now, I'll close the hearing and ask for suspension of the rules, uh, for ordinance number 1495, an ordinance amending the town of Rubicon zoning map, a part of ordinance number 1138. We'll go with Joe, uh, Phillip, Joe Kohler.
Motion by Alder Person Phillip, seconded by Alder Person Kohler to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of proposed ordinance number 1495.
For suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. Now, for actual action on 1495, we have Alder Person, uh, Tony Garza and then Alder Person Savage.
Motion by Alder Person Garza, seconded by Alder Person Savage for the adoption of proposed ordinance number 1495.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. Thank you. Now, we go to finance and personnel. President Rusniak.
Two items tonight, discussion and consideration of approving a Class B intoxicating liquor license and Class B fermented malt beverage license to 21 South Main Bar LLC, doing business as Mavericks for premises at 21 South Main Street. This is below Hank's Restaurant and Drinkery.
Do you get free drinks if you drive a Maverick?
No, you don't get free drinks anywhere.
Okay.
So, yeah, um, 21 South Main Bar LLC is seeking a Class B intoxicating liquor license and Class B fermented malt beverage license. Everything went through the police department. Um, and our office just fine, so we're recommending approval.
Sure. Any questions or comments? If not, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much for the approving of Class B intoxicating licor, liquor license. Looking, Alder Person Savage, Alder Person Curly.
Motion by Alder Person Savage, seconded by Alder Person Curly approving a Class B intoxicating liquor license and Class B fermented malt beverage license to 21 S Main Bar LLC, DBA Mavericks for premises at 21 South Main Street.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. President Rusniak.
Item two, discussion and consideration of approving a Class B permitted malt beverage license and Class C wine license to SNS World's Volume 2 LLC, doing business as Oscar's Wine Bar for premises at 100 North Main. This is the former Sudsy Paws?
Sophie Paws. Sophie Paws.
Yes, Sophie Paws on Main.
Right.
Yes.
Channel?
So, again, we don't see an issue with it. It went through the police department and our office just fine, so.
Questions, your comments, Joe?
So, how many, how many more, uh, Class Bs do we have that's, I guess, we get, and we have regular ones and then there's the, the additional. How many do we have left?
So, this one doesn't fall under because it's just intoxicating liquor licenses that we have a limit on. For intoxicating liquor license, we are at our limit, but we do have reserves available.
Right. So, the reserves are the ones that pay additional and then?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I knew we were running low on them. I just wanted to know where we were at. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm not gonna open a bar, don't worry about it. I'm just asking.
We're not gonna let you.
Any questions, comments? Not back to you, Mayor.
So, this, you said was, uh, Sophie Paws, is this for beer, wine, and pedicures? Is that?
No, Sophie Paws moved.
Oh, okay.
They're not serving wine at the dog.
Okay.
Okay.
Sophie Paws moved.
Right.
Okay, uh, for action on, uh, the Class B fermented malt beverage license and Class C, Alder Person Savage, uh, Alder Person Kohler.
Motion by Alder Person Savage, seconded by Alder Person Kohler approving a Class B fermented malt beverage license and Class C wine license to SNS World's Volume 2 LLC, DBA Oscar's Wine Bar for premises at 100 North Main Street.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. Nothing in public works for utility. We go to resolutions under item 11A. Resolution 3690, resolution approving a certified survey map for a property located in the town of Hartford on Hilldale Road, uh, T6-0292-00Y, T6-0299-00Z, and T6-0298. See what I did with that, uh?
You did well.
The Canada thing, yeah? Okay. Uh, with that, uh, do we have that being handled by, uh, our city planner, Jacob? What?
All right. Uh, the Nick P. La Mago Living Trust is looking to ta, divide three parcels, uh, as the mayor said, their tax keys. Uh, they're about 100 acres altogether. They're looking to split it into four parcels, pretty much separated out individ, or 25 acres to each of the living descendants of, of Nick Mago. Uh, this, uh, these parcels fall under our intergovernmental agreement between the City of Hartford, which is kind of defined there in, in your notes. Uh, really what we're looking for is, uh, to have them approve the C, to approve the CSM, but we're looking to add a note that lots 1 through 4 under Wisconsin State Statute 263 shall require annexation into the city for any future subdivisions.
Thank you. Any questions by council, please? Can you repeat that last comment? Which, which parts require annexation?
So, we would like to add a note that any future subdivision of lot 1 through 4 under Wisconsin Statute 263 shall require annexation into the City of Hartford.
So, even those little notched ones that you're showing there need to be part of that? Is that right, or?
Those little notch ones are not part of the C, of the, those are the original three. Those two houses there are separate. Those aren't, those are not part of the four parcels.
Now, they're in township?
Yes, they're currently in the township.
Thank you. Any other questions, Tony?
Uh, could you just show us an updated, I think there was a, in our documents, a map showing the four different parcels? Because I think they get divided a little different.
It might be up. It's up. We're up in the document.
Keep going. Keep going. The other way.
Oh, it is down further?
Yeah.
Or go that way.
I guess it is the other way. I apologize.
No, I, I have what you have.
It is down. I apologize.
Yeah.
That's what I have, too.
I have what you have.
I have both. Um.
Both. Okay.
Yeah, it's after the, keep going down.
I got what was on the flash drive.
Go down.
There's nothing else in there.
Yeah.
Go down. Right there.
Right. There it is.
Okay.
So, you got lot 1, lot 2, lot 3, lot 4, which divides it a lot different than the blue highlight is.
Correct. That's, that's how they are currently arranged. Those are the three lots that have not been divided yet. Once the CSM is registered with the county, that is what it will look like on the, on the C, on the GIS.
Okay. So, those three become four?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
But they're equally distributed out 25 acres each, pretty much, more or less.
That it?
That is it.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Just one quick thing, if you take your last name, Mas, and turn it upside down, it kind of looks like wet, so I just want to.
It's two times now.
With that, look for a motion to.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Alder Person Kohler, seconded by Alder Person Tony Garza.
Motion by Alder Person Kohler, seconded by Alder Person Garza for the adoption of proposed resolution number 3690 with the addition of a note that any future subdivision in lots 1 through 4 shall require annexation into the City of Hartford.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. We do not have any ordinances, first or second reading. Next is our city administrator's report by our own Steve Volker.
Did we miss one?
Did we miss one?
Uh, resolution number 3691.
Oh, that one. Yeah.
Oh, let's try that. 3690. No, that was resolution.
No, it's 3691, a resolution approving the City of Hartford Community Development Authority to award the radon testing and mitigation contract to Lifetime Radon Solutions and to authorize appropriate CDA officials to execute the contract document. I had already drawn a line through it, so I went, uh, boy, oh, boy. Uh, see what happens when it's that hot in here. Uh, did, uh, the, the bids on this particular one were extraordinarily close.
Yes, they were.
Uh, it was like a few bucks, literally. Coin toss. So, uh, with that, go ahead, please.
All right. Uh, so, the, the CDA had to, by HUD standards, had to put out forbid, uh, radon testing and mitigation for our CDBG grant loan that we give out to, uh, low-income, uh, low-modern income houses that do renovations. Uh, currently, we're pretty tapped out on funds. It, it gets paid back in when they, when they sell the property, but when they, when we do use that fund and somebody is spending a certain period of time in a, in a structure, we have to test for radon. And if there is a certain level of, uh, four FICA liters, uh, more per hour, then they have to, uh, mitigate it. And in order to do that, we had to con, send out a bid. Uh, we got two bids in from, uh, from, uh, Lifetime Radon Solutions Incorporated and K Comfort Incorporated. Uh, again, you were correct, the bids were pretty close in monetary-wise, and they were actually pretty close in our , uh, bid evaluation criteria. Again, uh, Lifetime Radon Solutions beat out in both categories, both in price as well as, uh, uh, total maximum points. So, we are recommending Lifetime Radon Solutions. We also had conversations with them. Uh, K Comfort Inc. does not do, uh, testing in basements that have, like crawl spaces that have, uh, non-paid floors, so, uh, dirt floor crawl spaces, they won't do testing in that, so we would have to find somebody else. So, at the end of the day, Lifetime, Lifetime Radon Solutions, it was the best, uh, bid for us in that we're recommending the, to move forward with, awarding the bid and then signing the documents.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions for staff? If not, would look for a motion to approve 3691.
Move to approve.
Alder Person Regan and Alder Person Webb.
Motion by Alder Person Reagan, seconded by Alder Person Webb for the adoption of proposed resolution number 3691.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No. Motion carried. And now to our city administrator, Steve Volker.
Uh, discussion and consideration of authorizing the appropriate Hartford, uh, appropriate Hartford Community Development Authority officials to execute the contract, uh, document for maintenance services with Cedarburg Solutions LLC at Main State Apartments, 313 and 319 North Main Street and 2628 West State Street.
So, uh, we're looking to go into contract with Cedarburg, um, Cedarburg Solutions for the Main State Apartments. We used to have an employee that worked for, uh, for us to help do, uh, maintenance on the property. That person resigned back in 2023. We had issues trying to find somebody to fill that role. Uh, we found out that the best course forward for us is to contract that out. Uh, it saves us actually over the, the long run. Uh, 2023, we didn't, I looked at their salaries because they were sick quite a bit, and part of the reason why they left is because of health issues. So, looking back further, we are doing over $12,000 a year towards that part-time employee, including benefits for FICA. So, in reality, this is a round figure of $12,000 that will be annually spent by the Main State Apartments. And again, this is under their account, so. spent by the Main State Apartments, and again, this is under their account, so it'll just be transferring funds from the part-time employee into the contract services funds.
Thank you very much. I have a quick question. I, I, in, in looking at all of the ancillary material we get, I didn't see any other bid. Did, did I miss a page, or, or why was, I mean, I, I have nothing against, uh, the folks, uh, at, uh, you know, the Cedarburg Solutions, I think that's fine, but did we competitively bid it?
No, so, a service you do not have to competitively bid. A public project you have to competitively bid by law.
Okay, but, so we only do, uh, by law, we're not looking at trying to do something?
Uh, with the fact that we, again, it was recommended to look into an alternative option to having in-house, um, upon getting a tip as to where we could go that would do a similar project or similar type of service, um, that's why we reached out to Cedarburg Solutions.
Okay, so, uh, well, I was just curious if there was any, anybody local or any company locally that would, I would have thought that they might have bid on it, and I was just kind of scratching my head as to why there were no competitive bids. I don't know if there is a, a local company, that's all I'm, I mean. Just a thought, I mean, you, you guys are voting, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, so during, during the, um, the CDA meeting, we, we discussed this, uh, quite extensively, and like, you know, um, Jacob said, we didn't, the position went unfilled, right? And we're trying to get something. Um, this position itself is actually, um, uh, how do we say it? It's, it's through, it's through the Cedarburg Group, but it's almost like a private, it's probably like a private contract we have with the person. And as Jacob said, it was, it was a solution that we came up to. It's not gonna cost the city any money considering the situation we're at, and, um, it, it's something that we could definitely, um, fill quick, and we need the service. So, it was a, um, as the CDA board looked at it, we, we voted unanimously for it.
Well, and that's great, thank you. Uh, hey, and, and again, two out of three ain't bad, you know, we didn't get a quote or, or other quotes, but if we're saving money in the long term, as you had mentioned, and they can fit, you know, fit it in right away, I mean, that's two boxes checked.
It is, the people are knocking on the doors for us, so, I mean, we went with it.
I just had to ask, go ahead, uh...
We did reach out to other, uh, pro- or cleaning services and maintenance services. This is the most competitive bid that we got, and the person that was most bonded, or that had the, a bond...
Well, bonding is good.
Yeah, that could bond with, and to protect our liability. So, that was, that was the key reason why we went forward with them after twenty twenty-three.
Okay, I just was trying to show, uh, Steve that I do actually read those things that I've, you know.
Oh, we believe you.
A wry smile passes his face. Okay, with that, Steve.
Oh, any other questions? If not, Mayor?
Thank you very much, okay, for...
Move to approve.
Older person, uh, Philip, second by, somebody said second, Tony? You're getting confused.